Right now, we have no members of the public. But in case anyone comes in, we ask you to silence your cellphone. And we'll go through the explanation of procedures for comments if anybody happens to come in. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you remain standing, we'll have a moment of silence. I'll start. We'll say, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Please remain standing. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. Vanessa, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Sinado.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Volker.
Here. We have a forum. All three commissioners are present. We set aside time for any of our O officers if they need to chat with us, but today it appears they don't. Public comment, once again, I'll note it, David, unless you have a public comment to make. Thank you. Right at the moment, we have no members of the public with us. We'll proceed. Under fiscal and contractual, we have our warrant registers provided to us by the Controller's Office dated April 15, 16, and 17. Gentlemen, take whatever time you need to look them over. And once you've done that, I could take a motion for us to accept these documents.
I make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you both. Any questions about any of the listings?
No.
If not, we'll ask Vanessa to call the roll.
Commissioner Sinado.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Under written communications... Excuse me, just one second, please. We have... Oh, excuse me, we have the minutes. The minutes of last Tuesday's meeting, April 15. Again, Dan and Chris, take whatever time you need and look them over. Whenever you're ready, we could approve them.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second the motion. Thank you, gentlemen. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, we'll ask Vanessa for a roll call.
Commissioner Sinado.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Written communications, we have two to enter into the record. The first comes from Newcastle Engineers based out in Chango Township. The letter is signed by Mr. Greg Del Principi. It's a notice to inform us that Mahoning Township intends to apply to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for a Pennsylvania Small Water and Sewer Program grant for upgrades to the Mahoning Township sanitary sewer pump stations. The letter asks that the county planning office provide a letter stating that the proposed project is in compliance with the county's comprehensive land use plan. And the planning office did that. They sent a letter on April 15 indicating that the county does have a comprehensive plan and that the above referenced project is consistent with the adopted county comprehensive plan. The second letter comes from RAR Engineering, signed by Janine Malloy. And RAR is based here in the city of Newcastle. They are notifying us that the Elport Borough Sewer Authority intends to submit an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for a Pennsylvania Small Water and Sewer Grant for equipment upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant in the borough of Elport. Gentlemen, can I have a motion to accept both of these letters?
I move we accept both letters.
I'll second.
And do either of you have any questions or concerns about either of the letters?
No.
Thank you. We'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Commissioner reports and comments. Looks like I'm up first today. Just a couple of quick items to note that tomorrow, actually, I'll be driving up to Elk County. We participate... Lawrence County participates with a number of counties in the northwestern section of the Commonwealth. It's a group of commissioners that get together on a quarterly basis. And we discuss areas of mutual interest, mutual concern. And we usually have a number of state officials that come in and speak with us. So I'll be representing the county at that meeting. I know Mr. Kennedy has a function he has to go to, but I'll certainly let him speak about that if he so chooses. But I do look forward to heading up to that meeting. You always learn a lot from the speakers and it gives you a good chance to communicate with other commissioners from this part of the state. That's all I have. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Sinado.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, last weekend was... We had a holiday weekend. I had an opportunity to do a few events. I participated in the prayer walk. I've done that since they started with the Trinity Church. And I think this was their ninth one. Would have been 10, but they didn't have it the year of COVID. But that's always a nice chance to go around and walk downtown Newcastle. And they said various prayers. And I got the opportunity to read the one for the county, to pray for our county. So I got a chance to do that. But I had an opportunity Friday afternoon to head out to Mahoning Township for the fish fry out there. Poncho and his group. It's always a nice event. They grow so much each year. I'm sure Poncho, they cut those fish right out of the quarry out of Hillsborough. I don't want to say that. Whatever they do to it, the fish has a darn good taste to it. It's good. And they do such a nice job just to raise money. It's great to see the community because they come from all over the county and outside the county. They've done a nice job on that. So I didn't want to throw that out there. The only other event I ended up doing, I went to the Victory Church. A Easter Fest at Newcastle High School. I've done that for many years as well. I told David, so his dad and Newcastle Police were well represented, talking to the young kids. It's just nice to see all the little kids that were there with Easter money. That's another one of our church communities groups out there that does a lot for the community. We have so many in this county, no matter which faith you are, they're out and has these type of events. And they've done that for many years. So that was pretty much all I had for the weekend. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. Commissioner Kennedy.
I can't pass this up. But Poncho's going to get you the biggest carton of firewood I've ever had.
As long as they fry everybody, you know, it was tasty.
That's what he'll do. But the only thing I have is tomorrow, I'll be at the Mocha House with Cliff Wallace and the Bieber Launch Farm Bureau. Forward Launch is putting on a coffee get-together tomorrow. There'll be some people from the state agriculture group there. Forward Launch and Ben Bush and the group down there. Besides that, Joe, I am nothing.
Your grandpa.
Yes. Last Wednesday morning.
Congratulations.
That's wonderful. We became grandparents, Debbie and I. Got a beautiful, healthy little grandson. My daughter is fantastic.
Lucas.
Yeah, Lucas Andres. She named him after his grandpa.
Very nice. Very, very nice.
She was always proud of her grandpa.
Well, we're happy for you, Dan.
So am I. It's one of those little guy called Little Peanut because he sits right here. Cute little guy.
That's wonderful. Okay, thank you both, gentlemen. We have some new business items. And actually, today is kind of a budget transfer day. It's really the only business we have at hand. The first item would be a formal budget amendment. Vanessa, what number do we give this?
This is only 83.
83, thank you. This comes to us from the District Attorney's Office. It looks as though they received unbudgeted revenue in the amount of $30,000 from the DEA, which I believe stands for Drug Enforcement Agency, TFO, which I believe stands for Task Force Officers, general revenue fund account, $30,000. And they are asking that it be earmarked for the District Attorney's overtime general expense fund account line item. This is number 83. Gentlemen, any questions or concerns? Hearing none, would one of you care to make a motion for its approval?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. If there are no other concerns, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Proposed Resolution 84. This pertains to the Lawrence County Agricultural Preservation Board. They received, according to Mr. Vanasco, they received their portion or a check from the state.
Yeah.
It's the amount of $47,262. And we will earmark that to the Ag Preservation Board's general expense fund account line item in the same amount. Would someone care to make a motion for Resolution 84?
I make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next few transfers, I think we have five of them. How about if we walk through them? And interrupt me if you have any concerns. But when we get to the end, we can either vote on them separately or as a group if you wish. The Human Resources Office is requesting a $2,500 transfer from their contingency into their line item of other contracted services. The Prophonitaries Office requests a $2,500 transfer from their contingency into their office minor equipment line item. The Voter Services Office asks for a $2,500 transfer from their contingency to materials and supplies. And District Judge Russo's office is asking for a transfer from... A $20,000 transfer from office major into office minor. And then finally, the Tax Claim Office requests a transfer of $2,097 coming from contracted consulting. Vanessa, the transfer document says they'd like for it to go into their office minor. And the printed agenda says office major.
It should be minor.
It should be minor. So the transfer document is correct. And we'll note on the printed agenda, we'll scratch the word major and we'll put the word minor. Dan and Chris, any concerns about these requests? And hearing none, would you wish to make a motion that we approve off-line?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Thank you both. If there are no other questions or concerns, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Couple of announcements. This board will reconvene a week from today, April 29, at 10:00 a.m. in this room. And the meeting is open to the public. And we'll note that two weeks from today, there will not be a commissioners' meeting on May 6. So we do meet one week from today. We do not meet two weeks from today. I'll note that no members of the public can come into the room. But before we adjourn, I'll see if Mr. Kennedy has any closing concerns. Thank you, Mr. Sinado. Joe or Vanessa, anything you need to bring up or that we've overlooked?
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody. Oh, Debbie Walker is watching us. Debbie, we'll have your packet upstairs for you. There being no other business to be brought before the board, I'll request an adjournment motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All those who say so, please say aye, aye, opposed, the same side. Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, David. Can y'all stick around for just a second?